Good evening. Welcome to the November 4th County Commissioner Meeting. I appreciate all of you folks coming out tonight. Got early, or got dark a little bit earlier than usual tonight, so we'll try and move on through it. If you would, all please join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful weather that you provided us over the weekend and the rain that we got last week. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the county and guide and direct us as you see fit to make the best decision for everybody. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one tonight, on tonight's agenda is the 2020 Census presentation. Mr. Peter Sabo? Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, I skipped a step.
I'm sorry.
You can stay right there, though. It won't take us long. Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. I forgot to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda this evening? If not, a motion to approve by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Allman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Now item number one on the agenda.
Good evening. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to come and take a few moments of your time to talk about the upcoming 2020 Census. My name is Peter Sabo. I recently retired from the military after almost 29 years. Moved here out to the Charlotte area. I live in Cabarrus County, but I'm responsible for Stanley, Union, Cabarrus, and Roan counties. I'd like to also say thank you very much for allowing us to work with Bob Remsberg and Bailey Emmerich. They've been great partners for leading the Complete Count Committee on behalf of Stanley County, and they've been doing a great job, so. The goal of the 2020 Census is for us to count everybody once, only once, and in the right spot. We want to make sure that everybody in the United States gets counted because that's what's required by the Constitution. As most people know, the Census is used for really two big purposes. One, it's the reapportionment of the 435 congressional seats in Congress, and most importantly, in my mind, is the $675 billion that gets distributed across this country annually. Those, as you know, here in North Carolina, we have 13 congressional seats. With the population of North Carolina growing, who knows what will happen in this next census, but good things happen that maybe we pick up another congressional seat. But, like I mentioned, that $675 billion, when you look at it, those top 10 things that it gets spent on, the number one thing that takes half of that money is medical assistance programs, but the roads and highways, everybody drove on those to get here tonight, but those are, that's the number four thing. Medicare Part B is number three, Pell Grants, Head Start programs, school lunch programs, those are all things in the top 10 things that that money gets spent on. And in 2018, the Census Bureau did a study talking about barriers, attitudes, and motivators. And they found the biggest barrier to people completing the 2020, or the Census overall, is that distrust of government and not really understanding how it is. They look at government just coming in and being nosy. But, once they were explained and they were talked to about how it affects their daily lives, about the money, how it gets distributed, how it affects everything that they do, people become a 70% chance, or 70% increase in participation of the Census. As you can see by the North Carolina response rates, in 2000 to 2010, North Carolina increased the goal, the governor set a goal this year of an 82% first response rate, or self-response rate for the 2020 Census. Stanley County, you saw, went from 73% to 77%, and I think with how the Census is being conducted this year, including the use of these complete count committees, and that was a big thing that the Census Bureau saw, was between 2000 and 2010, 2010 we started using complete count committees, getting the word out, educating people, and throughout North Carolina, almost every county saw big increases. And we think by continuing that, by using these complete count committees, that we're going to be able to get that increase up to 82% for initial response. People that we're trying to target, obviously we know there's a, you know, there's a section of the population that's going to complete the Census, but, like I talked about, we have a portion of the population that are hard to count, hard to reach, and we want to use those complete count committees, the trusted voices in the community, to reach out to them, educate them, make sure that they're participating. Children under five, in 2010, more than a million kids were undercounted, were not counted. And I think back to my in-laws, where they had four girls, and I could see my father-in-law back then sitting out, filling out the census, and he fills out his info, and he fills out his wife's info, and the oldest daughter, the third, second daughter. By the time he gets the third daughter, his hand's cramping, and he's like, eh, five out of six people is good enough, and sends in the info. So, I can see where kids get miscounted. The other reason is they're between homes. They're, you know, mom's thinking dad's going to count the child, dad's thinking mom's going to count the child, but we've got to educate people that everybody needs to be counted, because those kids that weren't counted in 2010, where are they now? They're in elementary school. They're getting into middle school. And I'm sure you guys know better than anybody that if we don't have the right count, we can't make the right decisions. We tell everybody, the money goes where the response is, not necessarily where the need is. You can have all the need in the world, but if you can't show it, you can't show the response, money's not going to come to it. People with disabilities, obviously the rural America, and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a second, but the way we find out, and we, the way that complete count committee can go and identify the areas, we use what we call the response area, or outreach area mapper. And what it does is it breaks down the states, the counties, into census tracts, and it gives a good idea of what the demographics are in that area for us to then focus on. So I pulled up Stanley County, and as you can see, you have on the outside, are kind of a lighter green, and those counties have, or those census tracts have about a 15% to 18% non-response rate, or low response rate, which means most of the people participated. The darker area, those three census tracts in the center circled around the city of Albemarle, they had a 20% to 21, or I'm sorry, 20% to 22% low response rate. As we talked and we go through the complete count committee, that's where I recommend Stanley County and the city of Albemarle focus their efforts. You know, most of that, most of that effort should be in that area, because as you can see, what I highlighted in red, your population under five, the persons in poverty, your Hispanic population here, the renter occupied housing, people forget, you know, they think, oh, you know, I just rent here, that's not my responsibility, but it's the, it's whoever's living at that address, everybody at that address needs to be counted. So it's getting renters to understand that, yes, they've got to complete the Census. The two big things is the households with no internet access and no computing device. Those things are going to become important because, let me go back one, those things are going to become important because of how the Census is going to be done this year. So, as we know, it's used in many different ways, education, healthcare, you know, determining where we're going to put a fire station, where we're going to put a hospital, what are we going to do for schools, things of that nature. The VA uses it to determine what veteran services should go where. So it's used in many different ways. Local governments use it constantly. Businesses use the Census data to figure out, should they bring business into that area? This is what I was referring to earlier. This year is going to be the first time that people will be able to respond to the Census via the internet. So what's going to happen about mid-March, every address in the United States is going to receive a postcard. And on that postcard, there's going to be an internet address or a toll-free number. And people can respond either one of those two ways initially. Those ways will be able to go up to 12 different languages on both the phone and the internet. If they don't respond in about 10 days, they're going to get a reminder, because we wouldn't be the government if we didn't follow up. And the, if you don't respond after that second reminder, about 10 days later, you're going to get a third reminder. And that third reminder should have a paper questionnaire at that time. The paper questionnaires will only be in English and Spanish, but like I mentioned, the telephone and the internet's going to be in up to 12 different languages. And this is where I mentioned earlier, those high numbers of people that don't have access to the internet, or don't have access to a computer, we've got to figure out ways, working through that complete count committee, to reach people, to educate them, let them know maybe where they could go to use those things, and get people to self-respond. Because if people self-respond, you're going to get the most accurate count. If the Census Bureau has to go and have enumerators go knocking on the door, or use other methods to figure out how many people live in that house, people may get miscounted or something, and then we're not getting the most accurate count. And obviously, like we mentioned earlier, the more response you have, the better it's going to be to get funding for whatever projects you have. Obviously, one of the big concerns is going to be confidentiality and security. The, I can tell you, when I have to log into my computer, I've got to get a code off my phone, I've got to log in, I've got to log into a second time, and then get to a virtual desktop, and so the Census Bureau is taking our security very serious. Everybody in the Census Bureau takes a lifelong oath, not just as long as we have the job, but a lifelong oath that we will not disclose any personal information. The information is secured and kept confidential for up to 72 years. After that time, it's released to the National Archives. So, the very first census, done in 1790, all the way up to 1940, that information is available through the National Archives, but the census from 1950 to 2010 is kept confidential for 72 years. So in 2020, or I'm sorry, 2022, 1950 will become available through the National Archives. But, when people go online and submit that, as soon as it's received by the Census Bureau, it's going to be taken offline. Your personal information, such as your name, date of birth, that information is stripped away, and the information, per the US Code, can only be used for statistical purposes. That's the only information that gets, ever gets released to the public, to other government agencies. At no time is personal information released to the, to any other federal government agent or local agency. So obviously, we're telling people to kind of prepare now. We're using this time between now and January to prepare, to come up with ways of how we're going to reach those hard-to-count populations, identify where they are, identify those trusted voices in the community that will go out and talk to them, whether it's faith-based, whether it's through the school system, wherever it is. We kind of find that if we, if people are kind of hit with that information in 10 different ways, maybe it's a logo on a receipt from the local restaurant that they go to, maybe it's a flyer inside their water bill, social media, they see a flyer at the doctor's office, their kids come home with a project through the Statistics and Schools Program. They get hit with it different ways, they start understanding how it's important, they become educated, and they want to self-respond. One of the big things is, we're looking to hire. The Census Bureau is looking to hire right now. We're looking for, for Stanley County alone, we're looking for 425 applicants. We have 134 right now. So we have a long way to go. We're looking for people to get out, help spread the word, and what we're looking for is come January, that the trusted voices like you, and the faith-based, and the education, everybody, to start continuing to push that water, to tell everybody about the upcoming Census, how it's important, how it affects their daily lives, and that they need to self-respond. That's all I have for right now, pending any questions that you may have.
Any questions from board members? There is none. Mr. Sabo has actually presented us with a resolution that you should have received a copy of in your agenda pack. I seek a motion to approve the agenda. Board, please.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the 2020 Census partnership resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Lohan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion on that resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Sabo a question. I had a lady that works for you all to put some signage out on my property about needing workers, and I think she told me that if somebody's looking for a job, it may not be full-time and it won't last for long, but pays acceptable wages. I think she told me the wages for a worker is like $14.58 an hour.
So, in Stanley County, the, when they go through the initial training piece, their hourly wage is going to be, I think, like $14.50. When they go out to the field and they start being, doing the enumeration, going to the addresses, that wage goes up to $16 an hour. The, they will also receive mileage of 58 cents a mile for their travels. And the work is, can be part-time, a minimum of 20 hours a week, all the way up to full-time of 40 hours a week. Daylight hours, which, as we get closer to the summer, hopefully it increases, so people can be a little more flexible with what they need. Obviously, if we're going to people's residence, they may want to try to get there at night, when people are home from work, and so we can get that accurate count. Does that give you the information you need? And everybody can go to 2020census.gov/jobs to apply.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes, sir.
You said you retired 29 years in?
Yes, sir.
What brand?
Army.
Appreciate your service. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item number two on tonight's agenda is a rezoning issue, and the presenter is Mr. Bob Remsberg.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you this evening. Thank you for giving me the time to be here. We have a fairly basic case before you. Now, give me a second, I will change the slide program up here. You should be able to see that. There we go. Should work. So, we have, can I get to my right page? Just as a word, Mr. Sabo's been very good to work with us as we formed this complete count committee, and we have reached around on the Census to a number of key groups in the community, faith-based groups and so on, for some meetings, and worked with Dr. James, for instance, to promote it through the school system and so on. So that's a process that's underway. So we're well underway, good program, and hopefully we'll have a great response rate, get us up to the 80% plus rate that we should be at at Stanley County. The case before you, you've gotten your memo from Dr. Ekman from the planning board, considering this, they, of course, met last month to consider this request from Jody Dean Sides to rezone 1.94 acres of a 5.39 acre tract, which is located behind 2530 Baden Road, and it's the rezoning request is to move it from RA, Residential Agricultural, to GB, General Business, which will allow him to expand his business, which is, and some of you may be familiar with it, J&amp;J Mobile Service, which is a boat maintenance and repair facility. As it said in the memo, his business has grown in recent years, he needs space to expand outside of his existing commercial tract. His plans include construction of an additional building with fencing to enclose boats awaiting repair. Traffic data, about 5,100 vehicles per day on Baden Road in 2018. When the planning board met, there was no opposition from neighbors at that meeting, which was back on October 14th. We've not received any comments, either through the planning staff, one way or the other, on this from neighbors, or anyone in the community, and of course, the adjoining property owners were properly notified. Mr. Sides shared that he is running out of space and hopes to expand to accommodate his business. Of course, he's here this evening, I believe, and can speak more toward his needs there. It is in a growth area per the 2010 land use plan, and all board members were present at the planning board meeting and voted unanimously to approve it. Here's the property. You can see the Baden Road, or NC 740, running across kind of the middle of the page there, and you have two pieces, and I think I can get my cursor going. This is his existing business, is located on the pink area here, and you see that's zoned by the city of Albemarle, it's GHBD, General Highway Business District, and conditional use. So that's for his existing business. What he wants to do, he also owns the tract that's behind it, and this green line represents the approximate location of the city of Albemarle sewer line that's there, and you can see that pretty well on the next slide as well. And his proposal is to rezone the area north of that green line, up to the city of Albemarle city limits, and you can see what's highlighted here, a little bit in that red outline. So that's the piece that's to be rezoned, and then you can see the kind of overlay here, again, you see his existing business, and the city of Albemarle city limits are in blue on that slide, kind of the shaded blue area. So, it's existing field, basically, as it stands, and he plans to expand. To give you a little better idea of the overall territory that's involved, if you look to the left side of, very left side of the screen, you'll see the Drive-In Movie Theater location there, and of course, Leighton and Anderson Grove Road intersection, there in Vicker Store Roads, the next road up as you head toward Baden. So with that, again, it comes with a recommendation for approval for, from the planning board. And I'll answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Mr. Remsberg? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the project?
I'm Jody Sides, the owner of the business there, and I am just asking for that little bit of extra property so I can have room to expand. We'll just slam out a room, and all you can do is drive through one gate and come out the other. I'm going to fence it, light it, gravel it, new trees will be planted on one end, which is the side going towards Anderson Grove Church Road. That'll have, that'll have new trees planted along the fence there to make some barrier. Just, I mean, I've been there 20 years, so we like for everything to be neat and look good.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Is there anybody else to speak for or against the project? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other discussion from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to rezone the 1.94 acres from RA to GB.
A motion by Commissioner Allman to approve the rezoning as presented. There was a second, I think, Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Item number three tonight, a pre-employment criminal history background check ordinance. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This ordinance that's here before you this evening doesn't change our practice. We currently do pre-employment background checks and criminal histories. The issue we came into, we had some turnover in 911 Department, and when we looked at that, and the FBI folks came down and did an audit of how we were doing that, they said you all didn't have an ordinance on file that allowed you to use the DCI system for criminal history. So, obviously, we'll want to get one on file, and so that's all this is this evening, is not really changing our practice. We will continue to do criminal background checks. It's really more about the semantics and the process of making sure that we're in compliance with the FBI to be able to use the DCI for this purpose. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions for the county manager? It's the pleasure of the board on this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed criminal history background check. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lohan, a second by Commissioner Jordan, to approve the ordinance as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number four on the agenda tonight is actually the consent agenda. Any questions from the consent agenda? It's the pleasure of the board. Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Allman, second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Anybody here for a public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will go to board comments and announcements. We will start with Commissioner Lohan this evening.
Want to give everyone an update on residential home building permits, January through October 2019. 343 new home permits have been issued, which is up 39% over 2018, and that is a fantastic number. The total value is $52,281,000, which will add to the tax base. Very good construction going on. Mr. Moon, we appreciate what you and your folks do in the inspection and the department back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Commissioner Jordan?
Nothing major for me, Chairman. I just wanted to say I'm glad that we got through the Halloween holiday as a county with fairly, without anything being really newsworthy, except Commissioner first party, apparently. But, you know, it was a great holiday. I know the weather probably stymied some people, but it was just cool to watch, all the, all the stuff the towns did, the fire departments did, the people did, the groups did, civic groups, it was great, and I'm glad our kids stayed safe. That's it for me.
Commissioner Barbie?
Like Mr. George just said, it's nice to have an uneventful week come up, so, but appreciate everything, and I don't have anything else to say.
Commissioner Farr?
Mr. Mr.?
Mr. Allman?
Just one quick thing. Really good to see Jody Sides here tonight. It's awesome when we see local businesses expanding, so glad he
It's awesome when we see local businesses expand, and so glad he was here and glad we got that taken care of.
Commissioner Morgan?
No comment.
I have no comment tonight either. There's no other business for the board. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 18th, at 6:00 PM. We'll seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, I believe a second by Commissioner Allman. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.